Call us, meeting goers, City Council Special Meeting Agenda Wednesday, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, six thirty PM, Council meeting. Call to capacity. Dolly?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Renzlo?
Here.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Dolly?
Yes.
Renzlo?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Okay. Budget framework. Oh, Chip.
Hi, Matt.
There you go.
Thanks. All right. Good evening. Thanks for everybody taking time to meet tonight at the special meeting. The I've gotten handouts of the material that Forest had provided in December, if anybody wants that for a reference point on the the housing. So if you need it, it's here. So what's what I've put together in the bound handouts, the same item that's on the screen, is behind the first tab is information on the city's historic budget information and city's historical levy. So as you can, the page numbers at the bottom center of each of the pages. So page three reviews the city's historic tax levy in column M. The aggregate levy of the city historically has been it averages, the median average are in the seventeen to eighteen dollars per thousand range. And you can see for the last two years at the bottom right in column M, the levy has dropped at fourteen dollars and sixty cents. That's what it is currently. The harm that's causing the city, I'll get into that in a moment, just in terms of the ability to collect TIP revenues and fund operations costs. The next page, exhibit four, we have valuations for FY twenty-three, twenty-four that we have from both county auditors and the Department of Management. The city's valuation grew three point nine nine percent for FY twenty-three, twenty-four for about five million dollars. So you can see the historic average over the period of time is roughly five point four percent. The next page is the city's taxable valuation after rollback has been applied. So what this page shows in in the second column, it's labeled base at the top, or base valuation actually declined a little bit compared to the current year. And the reason for that, we're going to be getting more TIP valuation than was expected. And I think we've got a better feel for how the county auditors are looking at that, so we'll approach that differently next year. There has to be a specific dollar request, TIP forms submitted each county auditor, and we'll be sure that that gets taken care of next year. So you can see in the middle column, the TIP column, the city's TIP valuation for the upcoming year is going to be sixty-eight million. These are set and established. That's the highest TIP valuation that cities ever had. So that is positive because the city will have a lot of TIP revenues coming in, but the drawback is it takes away from the base column, the second column from the left, and that hinders the city's ability to fund operating costs. So we'll get into that in a little bit more detail in a moment. You'll note the cities in the gray shaded column with total taxable at the top, the city's total taxable valuation, these are the final actual values from the counties, it's roughly eighty-six point three million for the upcoming fiscal year. That compares to eighty-five million for the current year, so it's a growth a little bit over a million dollars. That's lower than expected, and the reason for that is there is a multi-residential property classification. The city has, I think, five or six million of multi-residential properties, apartments, townhomes, duplexes, that type of thing. That rollback dropped significantly comparing FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four. But even though it grew five million in actual value, the total value is only growing a million. The next page is is a breakdown of the city's general fund revenues and any fund balances for the past eight fiscal years. FY twenty-one, twenty-two is still unaudited, and I actually have a sense when the auditor might have a distributable version of the audit.
In February.
Okay. You'll note in column H, the general fund any balance unaudited for June thirty, twenty twenty-two is roughly one million and six hundred thousand. So pre-city's sitting well from a general fund cash standpoint, so we just wanted to provide this as a kind of a reference point. So the next page, page seven, is a listing of the existing debt only that's paid by by TIP. Bond issues are in the center of the page, development agreements are the second column from the right. And if you would, you'll note the annual TIP obligations are roughly two million through the end of fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thereafter they drop off very significantly. So this this is kind of important in terms of looking at the annual TIP obligations that are currently due when we look at layering in new new TIP debt. The next page, and I it's hard to emphasize kind of how important this is, I guess, but if you look at the table at the top left, the city's consolidated levy for purposes of generating TIP dollars for FY twenty, twenty-one, at the bottom right of that top-left table is roughly thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. And please note the for FY twenty, twenty-one, right below that is was roughly fifty-two point seven million. If you note the table at the top right, after the city dropped its levy, which is obviously a good thing for citizens, the shortfall that we saw, the city's consolidated levy for TIP generating purposes also dropped when the city dropped its levy. So the consolidated levy for the current year is roughly right at thirty dollars. And on TIP valuation of sixty-two million, you're generating about the same TIP as was generated for FY twenty, twenty-one, one million eight seventy-two versus one million eight eighty-one. So on ten million more in valuation, the city's collecting the same TIP revenue. So the purpose in showing that is really to try to demonstrate the importance of maintaining a reasonable consolidated levy to help generate more TIP dollars. The next page shows what the city's budget dollars have been, and this focuses on budget dollars principally from property tax revenues, as noted in in column F. Column G is that the lot for the last two years, this has helped facilitate the decline in the city's levy. We've had roughly two hundred and thirty thousand of insurance funding from a one-year insurance note. So the historic dollars for operations from property taxes and the insurance note and cash on hand is listed in column I. So for the last two years, it's been four hundred and fifty-two thousand for FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and then four hundred and seventy-four thousand for the current year, as you're looking at different ways to approach the funding for your upcoming budget. And I know this feels like we're getting this out early, but I think probably later in the month you'll start to have to make decisions about what you want the property tax levy to be for FY twenty-three, twenty-four. And when you look at that, you have to, the state now requires a what's called a maximum profit tax resolution, and that takes into account, doesn't take into account your debt service levy, but it does take into account the operating levy or the what's shown here in column, column E. So if you look at different approaches with this, this assumes for just discussion purposes, three, five, and seven percent growth scenarios for the upcoming budget year FY twenty-three, twenty-four, what the operating levies would be, be shown in column E, and then the total city levy, taking everything into account, be shown in column J and the column on the right side in the the medium shaded blue. So if you have a operating budget increase consistent with more of the headline inflation that we've seen in recent months, roughly seven percent, that takes you to the levy at the bottom right of fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents. So that accomplishes two things with that levy rate. You have more TIP dollars being generated because you have a higher consolidated levy, and you also have more dollars for operations. I keep in mind, I'm presenting these first scenarios knowing that the council considers these and determines what you want to deal with your from a budget standpoint in terms of the funding threshold, but these are some initial scenarios to kind of think about as you look at a maximum. Chip, does that mean property tax level?
No word growth, would that be analogous to tax rate increase?
It it is a levy increase. It is. So it's, I feel like the fifteen dollars and fifty cents is consistent with what the prior council in September of twenty-one adopted for a financial framework that had a levy and a rate in the range of fifteen dollars. It's up to you as council to decide, is that fifteen, fifty acceptable, or do you want it to be lower?
And you're kind of basing that on the inflation, right? You know?
Yes.
And and then we would, we would have to go to the citizens and say, hey, you know, inflation's high, so we're going to raise your taxes to take more of your money while you're losing more of your money. So we're we'd be asking, and this is not to use specifically, I know this is, you're just giving us information, but we're going to be asking if we did that in any of these scenarios, we're going to be asking, hey, citizen, I I want more of your money for the city while, you know, you're maybe not getting a raise at work, or maybe you got laid off, stuff like that. So, okay.
Fair point.
Yeah. Fair point. And but there's, and there's really, I mean, I know we got to do something. I mean, it it wouldn't be hoofless just to leave it, I don't think, the way it is. But yeah, that's a.
If you raised it, Chip, you could have more money for each operations on the streets, the police, everybody else.
That's right.
Everything's costing more.
That's correct. That would be the rationale behind that.
I mean, one time, I guess, we asked, would this place in fact, would you be willing to pay more taxes for more money for the rescue and fire? Everybody raised, yes. But that's just people, it wasn't the whole town.
Sure.
Sure.
And and it comes back to the thing too, you know, this is, I think we have to, you know, look at spending up here as the city goes too, you know, and if everybody else is hiding in the budget, how come we don't have to? We have to watch parcels even more in this too, because everybody's feeling the pain. I mean, I I get it, you know, you need the money, you know, but, you know, I think we talked about it at a different meeting, that half the town at least is LMI people, you know?
Right.
You know, so what I feel good going into that person's house, you know, that struggle already, say, let me have some more, you know, we just want to spend more money, you know, and I don't think that's the answer. I think, you know, we got to kind of consider, you know, projects that we're looking at, you know, it's, and I know we don't have any of those numbers yet, you know, we don't know what it is, but, you know, with with the scenarios put here, you know, I think it behooves us to really consider different scenarios on everything we got going, so.
Fair, fair point. Good. I'll note, in column H on the future forecast scenarios, with with having a a lower base valuation, since so much of the valuation is going toward TIP more than what was expected, I've included to reach these funding thresholds, there's assumed to be a cash contribution was shown in in column H in those bottom three scenarios, roughly the city's spending down reserves in the range of roughly a hundred and thirty thousand for each of those scenarios, a hundred and twenty-nine, a hundred and thirty-three, and a hundred and thirty-five, six hundred.
Matt, goes back to that previous page where you said it was audited potentially. It's unaudited at about one point six.
That's correct.
So about a hundred and thirty out of that one point six.
That's right.
Until it gets official.
And so.
So still, still within our financial framework, if you guys remember, we we said we want to stay around fifteen percent and keep a million in reserve, so we'd still be right around there, even if we just went with the three percent, you know? And if we needed to maybe get a little bit more out, we'd still be okay, and I know we don't want to blow through or anything.
Right.
But we would probably still be okay if we stayed with the three percent and took a little bit more out of the of the general fund, if we needed to, you know?
Fair enough. You bet.
How much money do would we need to cut to get to keep that under fifteen dollars? Because we're talking like a point one percent increase, right? Almost a dollar on every thousand.
So you're, let's look at the at the at the top table, the revenue here is four hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred, kind of at the bottom right. So to keep it fifteen dollars, that, let's just compare that to the first scenario, the fifteen dollars and cents brings in two hundred and fourteen thousand in operating revenue. That's in column F. Let's see. So just take fifteen dollars times the times the eighteen million zero seventy-one, that's two hundred and seventy, excuse me, I got to back up the debt levy. So fifteen, the debt levy is roughly three twenty-five per thousand, that's eleven seventy-five in operating levy times eighteen zero seventy-one, that's two hundred and twelve thousand. So let's say if you kept it fifteen thousand, your new operating revenue would be, instead of two hundred and fourteen thousand, one forty-three, be two hundred and twelve thousand, three thirty-four. So you'd have to spend about two thousand more in cash, instead of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, be roughly a hundred and thirty-one. But that doesn't consider the drop in TIP revenues. And that becomes more meaningful when you look at, when we start to look at the, in the second half is the numbers for other numbers for the housing development, so.
And other projects.
And other projects, right?
There's potentially some four or five downtown.
Right.
Right now that are, you know, could be looking at spending.
So even if we went over that fifteen a little bit, you know, that was kind of a guideline, even if you went to the fifteen point one, you know, that's not too hard to bill to swallow. Fifteen point five two five, just, I would have a hard time if I had to go into my neighbor, if I had to say, you know, cough up the money personally for me.
Right, we're talking like a hundred bucks on a hundred thousand dollar house, right?
Which is a, it's a lot.
Totally a person with a fixed income.
Twenty twenty, but we're in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, I mean, we're next year. So now, do you want to spend an extra hundred dollars to get services that for rescue, police, fire, you know, your streets to be better? And we think that's a huge amount.
So at the bottom of page ten, which is at the bottom of the screen, if you compare the fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents, that was conservative, I picked the high scenario to do the comparison. So in dollar impact terms, that's per one hundred thousand of assessed home value, that's roughly four dollars and twenty cents per month. When you compare the fifteen point five two five versus the current levy of fourteen point six zero.
Sorry, you said a hundred thousand dollar house?
A hundred thousand dollar house, we're looking at like almost exactly a hundred dollar increase with that scenario.
Two, two, I'm not two hundred.
Not including a rollback.
Right? What did you say again?
You said a hundred thousand dollar house.
It's fifty dollars.
A year.
Per year.
Fifty dollars.
Okay, just.
So if two hundred, a two hundred thousand dollars assessed home, it is a hundred dollars, just double in error terms. Dollars a month-ish, eight dollars and forty cents. The the other items that are listed out there on on page.
Can I?
Please, yeah, go ahead.
He's a council, the county council, sitting around here, giving the concept of what Chip's trying to say, because really it's decision model, really, anything. To get more TIP, you have to raise the taxes, you know, to reduce the taxes, get less TIP, you have a higher TIP. So that's just what I want the council to go home, because I just, the idea of, in the triangle that I always talk about, the tax itself is a reserve. In order for us to go higher with the tax levy, we will use more of the reserve that we have, if you want more of the TIP. Is it good or bad? I don't think any of what Chip has presented has good impact to just a policy decision. Two years ago, three years ago, I think we established that fourteen or fifteen dollar taxes, that one million reserves, and we were stopped to just have a structure. I think Chip is proposing to change the structure a little bit, I don't think it's gone so far with the change, in my opinion, it's just a matter of policy decision, you know? Instead of living tax levy fourteen, he wanted to be fifteen. So I don't see it going that far, but it's not my decision here, it's a council decision, policy decision. More TIP because he's going to talk about the housing, the housing project, you need more TIP. To accomplish that, you have to go through the scenarios that he has. That's what I want you to think that home is you. We will be talking about the budget, and we'll have a special meeting for budget work session. Mainly the budget is an operating budget, as I always say, so it's not really that significant comparing to the TIP and the projects that we're going through, that's capital, same capital projects. So has a different value to it. I think if I understand Chip correctly, he's just trying to help give the council to have a broadcast of the idea of increasing the tax levy, or keep it as it is, giving money out of the reserve or not, that's if I am understanding you correctly. I have a chance to work with Chip, I don't think all the council has this chance, so he's coming to get all the council, kind of informed of what he talked to me about before. So at this point, I'm going to leave it up to you now to go next with the housing and all these things.
Okay, I'll go to, there's, you can see some more of the items on on page ten that outline sort of the rationale for what you, if you are so inclined as a council to look at a different levy rate, what that levy rate's been compared to what it's, the city's levy's been historically, the median levy over the over the years that are noted in front of the presentation, roughly has been eighteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. The fifteen dollar and fifty cent levy saves your per one hundred thousand of home saves a tax per twelve dollars and ninety cents per month. Even though it is, as noted at the bottom of page ten, it is an increase versus FY twenty-two, twenty-three levy of fourteen sixty. And the summary, kind of the recap is, it brings in more operating dollars for operations, but it helps generate more TIP dollars to pay down TIP debt, TIP-based debt. And I think that's principally what I got concerned about when you're looking at the scope of the housing phases that are contemplated and the debt structure is currently in place, it's large numbers. So I'll go into those next on the housing developments. What's on page twelve is really just a review of the existing three phases. Phase one, which is wobbled edition in basic terms, it's, it has thirty-two lots that are all fully built out, totaling six and a half million. Phase two has twenty-three lots built out, totaling five million, one sixty-one. I think that's all, all that there will be out of phase two, if I remember correctly from Forest, there, I think there are two non-built-in lots.
And didn't we restructure those to work into the new housing development?
The, one of the lots was, has not been too desirable, and it's going to be with the new, the additional phase it was trying for, it will reposition that lot a little bit to make it more appealing, it's going to sit in a better position, because then it'll be a corner lot as well.
So on, as of January one, twenty twenty-two, the most recent valuations available, phase three had a valuation of one point eight nine one million, that's shown in column E. If you carry that out, and phase three's roughly been assessed, as noted at the bottom right, the homes that are finished have been about two hundred and forty thousand for a medium assess, median assessment, that's compares to two hundred and four thousand for the first phase, two hundred and twenty-four thousand for the second phase. So the home valuations are increased. When you look at the annual TIP cash flow from phase one, two, and three, if you carry out phase three being fully built out at that two hundred and forty thousand dollar valuation, your annual TIP cash flows, and this includes the blight set aside, is roughly three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred. And your payback term, just looking at it from a kind of a financial metrics standpoint, your payback term on each of those three first phases is, I think we're on good pace for phase three to be fully built out, hopefully within a couple of years. The payback term in the, in terms of the cost, the upfront cost is roughly fourteen years. That's all the infrastructure. Correct.
For all three or for just?
They're all, each of the threes been.
Well, same, right?
All about the same, yeah. This assumes, and I try to note assumptions whenever I'm doing that, this assumes, assumptions are noted there at the bottom of the page, phase three includes two lots that are owned by the Catholic Church, so those, if that doesn't change, those are not likely to be taxable parcels, and that's, that's what I've assumed. I've assumed phase three's fully built out over the next three years, so by January one, twenty twenty-six. On the January one, twenty twenty-three evaluations, those will come out about in April, so in three months roughly, so we'll know what the assessments are for those, for the, for phase three as of currently, basically. There are three, excuse me, four homes that have sold in phase three that have sold for more than three hundred thousand, so none of, none of this occurred in phase one or two, the prices are noted there in the footnote, three ranging ranging from three hundred and nine thousand to three hundred and fifty-eight thousand as of currently, and maybe Matt can add some background on this, there are eleven homes that are still listed as a seed ownership per the county assessor.
We're down, we're back at the nine lots that are available.
Okay.
So the difference of, you looked free there, so.
So that if you look at the payback, those payback time periods, I, as it's noted there So that, if you look at the payback, those payback time periods, I, as it's noted there at the bottom, those don't take into account local option sales tax dollars increases, uh, you know, road use, you get more road use tax when you have a larger population. And it doesn't take into account hotel motel tax increases from visitors.
Did we have an increase in our hotel motel tax?
I'm not sure.
We voted on it, didn't we, and it passed?
Oh, yes, well, yes.
Yes, well, yes, yes.
I'm not sure of an actual revenue performance.
Yeah, so does that, when do we start seeing?
We, we, we are seeing, yeah?
Yeah.
What percentage would it be?
It went from five towards six, so I have to look it up.
Seven was a, six, seven's a maximum.
Yeah, I mean, I remember that. I thought so.
How you intend to use that, I'm not sure.
We, it's, it's decided.
There you go. Okay, uh, the next page is just, um, it, it's gonna come across a little bit doom and gloom, but I wanna just be as candid as I can on the current conditions of the housing market, and this is a national depiction, which is a little dangerous, cause I think in larger metro areas, you typically see housing get hot and cold, but in Iowa, it's typically more steady and stable. So this is just provided as context as you consider what might or might not be happening here at the housing market.
So it's not just a matter, to me, it's just not a matter of saying, well, we want, you know, it's only a four dollar increase, you know, it's what's actually, what's happening in the economy as a whole.
Right.
That we should be paying attention to, or what I would think I would wanna pay attention to, to say, you know, oh yeah, you know, we could tax them, we could get, you know, ten bucks more, you know, that's not a problem, but look at what's going on out there, you know, is this, is this gonna continue for? You know, right, you know, how do we do stuff? So yeah, it's easy just to raise the, the levy, but, and not, and turn the blind eye to everything else that's going on out there. I don't think that, so I think this is appropriate, very considered.
Fair enough. Uh, the next page, page fourteen of reviews, the, which is basically titled Womble Division and the Tivin Land. That the Tivin Land still has to be annexed, as you know, and included in the urban renewal area. What's really unique about that and what gives the, the city a certain financial advantage is there's not a blight set aside required with that phase. You do have the blight set aside with earlier phases, which I think are good, because they generate revenues toward cleaning up core infrastructure and houses in town that have already been approved with those monies. Um, you, you have more revenue available from phase four to, to pay, pay off debt, because you forty percent being peeled aside for, toward a, toward a blight set aside. And on item three, there's no, under current law, there's no blight sunset under blight designated urban renewal areas. Uh, I'll, I think there's, I won't cover too much on the item at the bottom of the page, I think that's. I spoke with Forrest this afternoon, I think the company is intending to cover most of those costs, so.
So would you say, I didn't, just repeating what you just said, you said you talked to Forrest and?
I talked to Forrest this afternoon, and I think, uh, my understanding is the company is intending to cover those road improvements. That's the current understanding that I have, so, um, just wanted to make that note. So that, that changes the assumptions here.
But this is, this is the fine thing, we're still in the middle of this, right? We're still in the thick of it?
Yeah, we're still trying to get it going.
Uh, just from a pure economic standpoint, when you look at the valuation that they've had on other locations, that hypothetically, worst case, if the city had to pay for that entire cost, it's a, it's a no-brainer to do it.
Right, about the cost of A?
With the valuation, I guess, that you generate, it would fully be self-supported by the.
Eventually another business is gonna go right beside them.
And others, right?
And others, just like the.
Exactly.
Development out here.
That's right. So what gets, um, a little daunting are the costs that are laid out for the. There, I think Forrest called them phase one, two, and three of phase four. It's easier to call them segments or some, something else, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can.
Yeah, so that's why the, why I brought the maps. Fa- segment one or phase one is the south portion for the Tivin Land. This assumes from a, this is really quite identical to what the council looked at in December, but this assumes, um, the costs that are noted there for those south thirteen lots. This includes funding for the Harland Street sewer work and includes engineering and the Tivin Land purchase, which is assumed to be, assumed to be thirteen acres. Um, segment two or phase two is sort of the, based on the map. That's broken out at a cost of roughly a million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand. There's additional funding to finish out the Womble land purchase, which the city is currently, that eighty-seven thousand is currently being paid for with cash, that'll get reimbursed. And then the north, northwest segment, um, is assumed to be estimated at, from Forrest, roughly two point one million. I, just in summary, um, from a TIF cash flow standpoint, I feel comfortable assuming we have a decent pace of build-out on phase four. It seems to me that I'd be comfortable if I were a council member looking at this and saying you could fund segments one and two. Finding all three seems like a pretty large dollar amount, so, um, it gets concerning when you get to the dollar threshold with rough people.
Chip, I'm hoping to answer this question, the rehab on the sewer, is that a whole new sewer line from second to, through Harland down the sewer pipe? It just lifts?
I think.
I thought they were, they're lining everything, because the problem with the sewer is the fact that we're leaving so much out of the lines that our sewer system cannot handle more, and so we have to go through and we have to line all of them.
It's, I thought, I thought.
It's like, Forrest, we have money.
Yeah.
So I have a question for you on this one here, so.
Chip.
I know, I know you have just the seven hundred thousand under phase one, right?
Yes, yeah.
So when, when we start getting bids and stuff, if we decided, well, we gotta, we just wanna do like, say, it just came up, we, we, we just wanna do phase two. But we've already said, hey, we're gonna do the Harland street, no matter what, we just have to add the seven hundred thousand into that amount, so it would be roughly two point six for phase two, if that's the only one we choose, if that bid came in just for that.
That, that's correct, and, and then the other piece would be the, I think, the land purchase.
Right, yeah.
If you include that, that would need to move over also, and then as well as the.
Oh, okay.
The engineering too, we'd have to.
So all that would, it would just shift the other, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanna be sure I.
So, so those items like in row eleven, twelve, thirteen, and nineteen and twenty, nineteen and twenty's the land. That would all, to whichever segment that you would proceed with. Or would, you could allocate pro-rata if you did two segments, okay, but.
I just wanna be sure I was on.
Sure.
Right, way from there.
And, but you can, of course, as you mentioned.
You don't have to answer that, who negotiates these land purchase prices? Does that C negotiate these prices?
The, yeah, yes, C and others.
War and Harland's on both sides, working with Tivins and C.
Um, the land values have gone up.
So you'd think.
Not that high.
Not that high, but, I mean, it is what it is, but that's steep.
The, based on some other, I have been watching some other areas.
Well, it's just in that area right there, because of other adjacent property owners are paying about, so. If one person's gonna get it, they're all gonna get it. I get that, but I was just curious.
But, uh, I have been monitoring some other communities, and that's similar. Some other small communities, that.
For that type of ground too, not agricultural?
See, that's the difference in that, yeah, if you look at the use.
I'm thinking Ryan's gonna sell, and then you can get, why wouldn't you sell?
You got pasture ground versus crop grounds.
Yeah, double or more.
Dozer and the other ones doesn't.
Okay, but either, if, either segment that we do first, if we choose to do any of them, the sewer goes with the first phase. I mean, cause that has to be done before we put anything.
That's what I understand from Forrest and Jim.
Right, I mean, I, I push for month after month after month to get that sewer stuff in, cause we cannot handle any more without getting that done.
That'll be a constant thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's just.
Maybe it's the only thing, who knows, you know, depending on.
It, it has to be done.
You know, whatever, you know.
And if this is something that we're going to do, I mean, as a person that lives out on a road, and James was here, I think he would understand this too, like. It would be really, really tough to do phase two and phase three before phase one, as this sets up.
I agree.
It's just a nightmare with one, one way in, one way out.
You have no way to get in and out.
It is, it is really great.
And the new road's supposed to be wider.
Right, I know that.
But I think the road was talked about, no matter what you start with, the road was gonna be part of the first one that we did, because you need that to get to any of it.
That's what I gathered.
So the sewer and the road were like the two most important things to go with whichever segment we decided, if we did on any of them.
And you start to look at, if you're doing that, there's, look at it on a per lot basis, sort of mentally. Phase one, segment one has thirteen lots, segment two has, um, twenty-three. It's much more cost-effective on segment two if you simply look at it on a per lot basis. What even, even not, not even allocating the extra costs, not allocating Harland Street, or not allocating engineering, just looking at, um, the, in row six, just dividing that by the number of lots, so. Meaning it brings in more revenue on a per-cost basis, so.
And I think the farther you get out there, I think your houses are gonna start getting a little bigger and a little more pricier.
Fair enough, I, I hope so.
It seems to be that way, I mean, it seems like phase one, Womble one, I mean, we were, like you showed in your thing, you were at a lower, and it seems like then we did another housing development. And the price, the houses started costing more, and they were a little more up, and now, now three, I mean, look, they're catching three hundred thousand dollars.
That's right. And I've, I've, maybe I've been too conservative on assuming phase three builds out at an average two hundred and forty thousand, but that's what's been, been noted here, and then looking ahead on phase four, um, if you go to page sixteen. I've assumed evaluation, so that there are six different scenarios on, uh, page sixteen. Scenario A and B assume just the first segments, thirteen lots. They, scenario A assumes a four-year build-out pace, scenario B assumes it builds out over six years, which is conservative and slow, considering existing phases have gone. Each, um, each scenario assumes a valuation of two hundred and sixty thousand per home, so I just wanted to note that. And that, then this allocates the prior cost according to what's on the prior page, so just keep that in mind in terms of allocating Harland Street sewer and so forth, um, in the column E. So, uh, the second two scenarios, C and D, are assuming twenty-six lots, this is what are proceeded with. Again, two hundred and sixty thousand per home, and then scenarios E and F assume all three segments, which is sixty-three lots. Uh, E assumes a four-year build-out pace, and F assumes a six-year build-out pace, where it's built out equally over a six-year time period. So what, in this, um, if you, we'll just go briefly, if we can, to, uh, page seventeen. And I'll just highlight the dark gray shaded area at the bright center of the page, column N, N is Nancy. The, the tighter, um, annual TIF cash flow that we have to deal with, given the existing debt that the city has outstanding, are through the end of, principally through the end of FY, uh, twenty-nine thirty. And then af- thereafter, the city's annual TIF revenue that's available or not committed toward existing debt, that opens up a great, great deal. This assumes, in column I, the funding for twenty-six, excuse me, this is thirteen lots, pardon me. And then the, uh, south gas line and road, road is shown in column J, we'll have to adjust that downward, given, given the cost. But the city has, pretend you have no existing TIF paid debt, you could fully support this with really, really slow developments in phase four. It's taking into account the timing through the end of FY twenty-nine thirty, we kind of have a timing mismatch. If we could get to a point where we're past some of the next three to four years, let's say, when TIP debt is paying on existing obligations, and could structure the debts that's paid out more in this lighter gray area in column N, there'd be a lot more available TIF cash flow, even assuming a really conservative build-out base. So that's, go, and then going back to page sixteen, what's attempted to be highlighted in column F. The initial years of the TIF cash flow of the city there, and this pulls numbers from the subsequent pages. If you assume thirteen lots are built out, first two scenarios, there's positive TIF, TIF cash flow. And the next, through the end of FY twenty-nine thirty, I will win another year on this one. If you segment out the next ten years after that, you have a tremendous amount of TIF cash flow in FY thirty-one to FY forty-two. And look, this looks at just the term of the debt, so it goes to FY fiscal year forty-two, and then accumulative TIF, TIF cash flow. And this is TIF that's available after this debt's paid, so the debt's already taken into account. So you have, you know, the first two scenarios, you have more than ten million in net free TIF cash flow that's available. On the second two scenarios, C and D, you have a tighter TIF cash flow. In the first, you know, out through FY twenty-nine, there are some years that are negative, and I, I think that's okay. The city can handle that, given the TIF cash you have on, have on hand now, and the surplus that we're gonna be getting for FY twenty-four. So both of those scenarios, even though it's negative, the city can financially shoulder those. And then in the cumulative perspective, each of those has a slightly less positive TIF cash flow at the end of the day. But both are still liable to be financially supported, even though they're much more costly on a per lot basis versus the first three housing phases.
And that's just assuming that it's built out in four years or five years.
That's right.
So if it doesn't do that.
If it doesn't do that.
Then we're gonna be, maybe not in a real bad place, but it's gonna not be a real good place.
It wouldn't be as ideal, so, right. So what, what, what the city did with the first, very first phase back with the, with the two thousand thirteen financing. And this is noted at the bottom of, of page sixteen. To help, um, kind of better align the timing to cash flows on the new TIF debt with the available TIF cash flows, assuming conservative, if you just kind of look at, given the existing TIF that's available. You could issue, um, either two or three-year short-term project notes. That would, and the benefits noted here at the bottom of the page, I don't need to just read them off, but the, what it better able, enables the city to do is to put more of that, that TIF debt service after FY twenty-nine thirty. The benefit then too, you might have a situation that interest rates are lower in two to three years, what they are now. You also have the benefit, you can very accurately size the long-term financing, not really including any contingency, cause you're, after three years, your construction's gonna be built out, you don't have a final project cost. So you don't have to finance that contingency amount, and then additionally, we can just more carefully, we'll have a better feel for how phase three. And then additionally, you, we can just more carefully, we'll have a better feel for how phase three gets built out, and we can more, of the debt for phase four, um, when you look at those, look at the timing, so. And I know the disadvantages, you pay the financing cost twice, and then also, you know, interest rates might not be lower in two, three years. They might be the same, and they might be higher.
But you could look at it, that these lots may go faster, and, and we may go through them quicker than what we think.
I think the odd thing, the odd thing.
You're conservative, but.
The odd thing could happen, if, if a family's set on building a home, and they look at the high cost, more in the immediate metro, where you have to pay the high land costs as the home buyer, you're not passing that land cost on to these property buyers. It might give you a more unique advantage than we had, even more so than.
And we can market it more.
We can market that there's more of a savings here.
I mean, I was hearing Newton's three lots on the radio, I mean, you can market a whole lot more to get it out, and get the word out that we have these lots, it may go quicker.
Uh, I'd like to take, on that note as well, I wanted to say that there's other cities that are wanting to do the same thing. There's other cities that I've been a part of the conversation with Ash, that have come up here and had meetings, and they would like to find out our secret sauce. Other communities are wanting to do this. We are way ahead of some other communities. And I think it's time to stop.
I guess, just at the seed meetings, can the developers over the last six months, um, who's still out there, and who's left? Who's like vacated their interest?
Uh, okay, well, we still have the Savannah home. There's been a Rose development that built two.
But, they had additional lots and they rescinded, right?
They, they had two, now, uh, two other lots they were gonna build on, they rescinded. But it's because of the timing requirements, because if you get a lot, you have to build within six months. With the winter coming on and the inflation, they, it wasn't right for them. They are still very much interested in the Stewart.
Something we can adjust, who set that six months?
You have to start with that six months.
You get into the risk where you have somebody that starts a house and never finishes it.
No, I mean, I get that, but I was just saying.
Yeah, see, if you start with six months, then you have a year to build, right?
I can't, honestly, I can't remember, but C set that up, and.
That's what I'm saying.
That's where I was, I didn't know who set those ones, but anyways, go ahead.
So, the timing wasn't right, and then they got the interest rates.
Very.
So the conversations I've had with Rose Development, but with some other real estate issues as well, is that they're, it's waiting for the consumer to get adjusted to what could be back to normal interest rates. For the longest time, they were at seven percent, uh, years. Prior to that, I mean, I, one of my first homes, I was paying thirteen percent interest, and that was the norm. So, I think around seven, some people think six and a half is gonna be a, an average. So, but it's gonna be a, maybe a year or so, maybe two, for the consumer to get adjusted to these.
So Rose pulled out, Savannah's still out there, who else is out there?
Marks.
Uh, yeah.
But you have Marks on that one.
My, my question was, who's building spec homes?
Or homes still out there?
Who's proactively wanting to build homes, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, uh, the proactive spec homes is Savannah.
And, and Rose.
And, and, and Rose, yeah, they're, they're still interested in Stewart, that's just the timing. Uh, and there are some, there's, uh, Greystone, again, that was another issue of timing. Uh, so they rescinded, very much interested in Stewart, but it's timing.
Okay.
Um, so other, and I got some other developers that have approached us that are interested as well. Again, though, they haven't taken up the lots because of timing, so, in, in springtime, they're gonna be looking into those again.
Is that a point where, you know, we can get information from A-Del to see what their home starts are? Or, I don't know, with the average per month, you can kind of share that?
Yeah, you mean their home starts.
New, new home permits, to see if they've gone down.
I, I, but they offer a. Tax.
They, they've quit doing that two years ago.
Uh, they've restructured it. Uh, but I can check into that. So I also want to add though that, uh, the phase four though, by the time we get done with land purchase, um, engineering, getting bids, actually getting the work performed, we're looking at two years.
That's a good point.
Should do that, so by the, the time we can actually get a, a land that's available to be built on, yes, we're going through a turbulent time right now, but I, and other people, me and other people I've spoke with feel that it will level out by then.
To that point, I mean, this is being provided really as informational, there's no decision sought from the council tonight, and, um, it's informational just in terms of your budget for next year, but also, I know, I know Forrest had planned on a February bid date, I'm not sure, I doubt that that will be met with phase four. So, as you contemplate what scope or segments to include on phase four, this is just background information for your records, so.
And did we talk about, we haven't made the decision on what to build out, right? Or no, we did, with, right, with alternates?
I think it's already discussed, I don't know if it's formally.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought, you know, we were gonna look at different, these different options, you know, and bid them separately, you know, and get an idea.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I didn't remember.
You know, and, and right now, you know, even the, the phase one, you know, there's some, there's some stuff going on there where, you know, just the lay of the land, we don't know a lot about that, you know, there's some research being done on that, so. It's just, it's gonna be hard to, we don't know until we get that from it, you know, and what it's gonna look at like, but, you know, there's just a lot information that you have to consider in that, you know, what we want to do.
That.
I also want to add that on the coming development, I, the, the land price has been an issue, but when you look at the breakdown on what the, developing the cost for the, putting in the infrastructure and the roads and stuff like that, the, really is not the big dollar amount in that. Most of it's going into the, most of it's the infrastructure cost, and those costs, that cost ain't gonna change based on the land price.
Page fifteen, infrastructure, um, in row ten, if you look at the three, all three segments, the land, the upcoming land costs, then the existing land costs are noted at the bottom of the page. The upcoming land cost is three hundred and sixty thousand, or proposed upcoming, however you wanna phrase that. Got any more of that? No, that's it, glad to answer any other questions if you come up with anything, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
Thanks, Chip.
You go home and study this for the rest of the night, and say, I'll, I'll try.
I would like to comment on something, you know.
Hey, Dave.
You're talking about people in the.